You're watching Access to Port County Channel 97. Coming up next is the October 27th meeting of the Michigan City Common and Council and Fire Department Workshop. You can find more information for this meeting at www dot access to Port County dot org.
All right, it's a meeting. It's six P M. All right, it is six oh one. I am calling the Public Health and Safety Committee to, um, and Councilman, um, Jean Simmons is a member of the Public Health and Safety Committee. Along with myself, I knew Councilman Matt couldn't be there, be here tonight. Um, but again, we have several council members that are here. Councilwoman Tracy Tillman, Councilwoman Daudzianis, Councilman Paul, um, Don Kevulenski and Jeanne Fitzpatrick are here and Bryant might still be here and I know that some people have to leave. But this, um, meeting is specifically for, um, the ordinance that is on second reading, amending section fifty that is between three in the Michigan City Municipal Code known as the Fire Code, compliance inspection fee and non-emergency medical assistance fee. And, um, in doing so, um, and just note too that, um, there will be some changes also with some of the, we're having some discussions about the inspection fees for the planning department too as well. So, um, at the council meeting, I shared that, um, the fee has been thirty dollars for, and we can get some clarification on how long it's been thirty dollars, but it's been thirty dollars for a long time. And so we, um, have increased it in this amended ordinance that's on the agenda to fifty dollars. Uh, I know there's some additional towns that around our, uh, our city that have, uh, have increased fees or a lot. They're a lot larger, uh, but I just wanted to allow the fire department to kind of present what they did at the city council, um, on, you know, why this is important because really truly the fees need to go up, but it's also creating a non-reverting fund, which would be another ordinance to support displaced families when there are emergencies. Uh, I know that we don't have a local American Red Cross anymore. I used to sit on that board and, um, again, with, uh, some of those boards being more regional, we want something that we can do for our citizens and this is a good way to do it. So I'm going to turn it over to the fire department to, to make any comments and share anything. And then if we have any financial questions, we have our controller office and deputy controller here, um, to answer any questions as well.
Okay, so, um, I guess where this all started, uh, is when people get displaced in their homes after fire. Uh, we discussed that the other day at, at the council meeting. Um, it, it started out as something simple as, uh, just taking a couple of dollars from the inspection fee, uh, which is thirty dollars per business annually and putting it into a non-reverting fund. Um, and then taking small portions of that using, uh, like a debit card to give to these families that are put out to give them, um, a little bit of a, a filler for their gap or get their insurance to kick in or other sort of assistance. Um, and I think in the process, we decided that the fee had been thirty dollars for so long. And inspections, uh, get more detailed, um, there's a little more experience that goes into some of these bigger buildings. Uh, it takes a little longer to do some of these bigger buildings. So we, I think, you know, we were at the point where we think the fee needs to go up a little bit. It's been there this way for so long. Um, I don't, you know, that's, and then that's where the ordinance came in to get this raised, to get this, uh, this rescue plan or this emergency package into the hands of these, into these families. And instead of going and creating an entire new ordinance, we figured we just amend this one and, uh, and slide us in there.
And also before, um, to add to that too, I didn't want to impact, um, um, the money, the thirty dollar fee, taking money away from that, that's already being utilized in the budget. So, um, because anything, if we didn't increase the fee as well, we would be taking money out of, you know, creating something new. And now we're drawing out of that. And so the thought was increase the fee, create this fund with some of the additional monies that we will, you know, get from, from the increased fee. So, and I don't know if you looked at any, um, additional cities or anything, 'cause I, I've heard that there's some that are seventy-five to even a hundred and fifty dollars.
There are, there are, and especially your, your bigger cities, your multiple hundreds of dollars for, for city inspections.
So the question, the question I had in regards to the fee, um, should that fee, should that fee be flat or should we scale?
We talked about that.
We discussed that as well and now you're, you're talking of going to each individual.
Like if you're gonna, and maybe, like if you go to storefront that's two thousand square feet versus a warehouse that's twenty thousand square feet and it's only thirty bucks, that doesn't seem, that doesn't seem like it should be to make sense.
And if I can imagine based off of what, um, Councilman Fitzpatrick is saying, um, under asset protection for Meyer. And so when you did your annually inspections there, based off of the square footage and everything, but also the fire, when you check the fire extinguishers, I know you won't be able to say it per, a charge, but how many fire extinguishers within that store or a business somewhere along that line? So I do see where you're saying if there's a way that it can be scaled. 'Cause I would say maybe fifty in one, in that store, so if it was per.
You have to check every fire extinguisher?
No, so what we do.
Well, we, we would do that, but they check the overall.
Right, I get a, I get a report from other businesses, uh, other companies. The extinguisher companies, sprinkler companies that go in and do their annual testing. So, uh, thirty percent or forty percent of my inspection is already done when I go to this business. So I already know what I'm looking for, which paperwork I'm looking for. Make sure it matches up, make sure they're doing their part as far as keeping everything in compliance. And then I do my walk around, I do my, you know, check my exits and do my spiel with, with my inspection. So, um, if they are that much, you know, completed at the time that I go to these businesses, that makes it a little easier on me. And then there's some that I can walk in the front door and if it's one, one room, it takes me, it can take me five minutes. It can take me ten minutes to do one building and I can spend two hours at Meyer or three hours at Meyer.
And that was the question, you know, that we kind of talked about, 'cause I was, I was thinking, I was trying to set a square foot, square footage, you know, if it was above a certain thing or below. But then it got into, well, what type of business, you know, so there's so many different things. So we thought to start with, just to create the fund, we would go with the, a flat increase of fifty dollars across the board with maybe an opportunity to research, you know, if there's other things that we can do. Because I do believe that, um, should charge more.
Is it increase of fifty or increase of twenty?
Increase to fifty, it's only twenty bucks.
Yeah.
Okay, from thirty to fifty, increase to twenty dollars.
Yeah, Angie, I got a couple, uh, questions. So how many inspections right now?
Fourteen hundred.
Do you use on an annual basis?
Just shy fourteen hundred, fourteen hundred registered businesses in town.
Okay.
That does include Airbnbs and all that?
Does not include.
No, we're just talking to, yeah, businesses. So, you know, as far as classifying, and I think that's the right way to do it. You know, depending on what size business you have, that's how much you're gonna get, uh, charged. And maybe like in a real, you know, however a real estate business does it. You know, they have office space, okay, if you got an office, it goes under there. If you have manufacturing, it's all, it's automatic, if you got a, if you have a factory, it's automatically falls under manufacturing. If you have a, you know, what, an auto dealership, it automatically falls under auto dealership. Whether you got twenty cars on your lot or two hundred cars, that's how much you guys are gonna pay. So that might be another avenue to look at to make it real easy to go boom, 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 we got six classes. This is how you fall under it, that's how you pay, then you can go, you know, like a hundred, ninety, eighty, you know, whatever. If you guys feel it's more, 'cause I don't know how long, how long does it take you to go into a, you know, a manufac-, an average size manufacturing?
Can I jump in here really quick?
Yes.
Because this is a financial part. So he does the inspection in one program and then I have to go into another program and bill. And I don't know if Tyler cashing, what he, it doesn't talk to each other.
Oh, okay.
So he does the inspection in one, where you could classify it, but then I've got to go in and determine out of Tyler what the fee is. And I don't think it would set up, it won't go over, we would have to manually put in.
Yeah, it'll have to be revised.
You just have to revise, I think we have to revise the bills. You have to feed you the information as it's like, okay, 'cause that may be a lot, I don't, we have to.
Yeah, we're gonna have to build all that into the billing system.
Classifying or.
Right.
Well, and that's the thing, it, when I think about your salary, just doing the inspection, I mean, the cost to do the inspection. You're doing fourteen hundred inspections, you know, it'd be nice if that covered, you know, majority. So I like having like different categories because, you know, manufacturer, again, if you go into Dwyer Instruments on the floor and then you got office space, you got the manufacturing floor, you got all this stuff. Or you go into, um, Solera, whatever it is, right? It's not gonna be the same as you going into a daycare.
No, I was gonna say another thing, uh, along those lines, uh, occupancy. 'Cause if, if this is a ten thousand square foot building and it's used for manufacturing, there may be what, a hundred people in there? But if it's a ten plus square building and it's a movie theater, you know, where it can be four hundred people in there, that is different too. 'Cause I'm pretty sure you have to be looking at different things like how many exits per square feet.
Right, and most of that is, most of that's put in play when the building is designed. So most of that work's done for me, uh, when I go. And, um, we have that information in our pre-plans. We go out and we pre-plan a building with those exits, with the, you know, egress, all that's already pretty much put into play when we do our inspection. That's just one thing that I don't have to inspect unless they do some type of construction or do any type of work.
But I think the place I was trying to go to is, uh, mom and pop daycare that, you know, twelve kids can be there is not the same as a movie theater that's generating thousands of dollars a hour. You know, a thirty dollar fee is, you know, that's a thing of popcorn.
Right. They're not trying to coddle anybody, but if you can think of, but if you can think of categories, like what, what Councilman Don was saying, you know, what would those look like? Would it be grocery, retail?
Well, they're, they're already classified. Uh, when you open a busi-, when you open a business that's already classified, uh, in the fire code. So it'd be really easy to go through and classify these businesses and we would just set a fee for each classification.
How many classifications are there?
Five.
Oh, okay.
We didn't know if you were gonna say fifteen.
I know, I know. Okay, so we're, so we're with daycare as well, 'cause they're small mom and pops.
They're, uh, they're a bit, uh, educational facility, so they fall, but they fall in the same category. But I would do all schools, the state does most of the school.
Okay.
So, private school, and I would have to do that, so.
See, daycares, I, the reason why I'm asking that, because they're struggling right now. So that's why I'm like, you know, I don't see that the same as Michigan City Area Schools or Ivy Tech or, uh, anything like that. But I see like a, I'm talking about home daycares, not home cent-, not, not, uh, early ed centers. Those are different.
What's that, Angie?
So there's a difference between, so, so, so there's different categories of facilities, like Head Start. No, like Head Start, you have Head Start, that's an early education center and then you have early education homes. You know, so those are two different ones, but they're still in the same category. And so Imagination Station is a lot bigger than a daycare that's a home, you know? And so there could be, um, a difference in that, that would be the only thing.
For that category, maybe occupancy or something like that, part of it to split it, you know?
Yeah, occupancy less than twenty-five or twenty or whatever. But if you can just send us that part, the code.
The majority of ours are gonna be under the business. And then you would have to, maybe by square footage.
Yeah, there'd be subcategories. No, I would just say if it's five, yeah, if it's five, and then we could just say if it's square footage or whatever. But we can talk through that, 'cause I'm trying to think, if we, if we decide to do five categories, we need to get that information number one and then kind of talk through what that could look like. 'Cause I, I would think is manufacturing a separate one?
Industrial.
Yep, industrial.
Yeah, so, so for industrial, you know, you go into an average site like a Solera or one in Dwyer. So to go through Solera, how long does that take? Would that be one fire person going there or would you have like a team of other people that go?
One inspector, it'd probably take me at least three hours, though they got three good sized buildings there to do, to do that.
Do they pay a fee per building?
No.
No, they pay five bucks for the whole. It's one business, that's a steal.
It's per business.
Per business, yes.
Okay.
Now, I don't know if you look at other municipalities or, uh, governmental agencies and see how they do it. What's the standard? Is it just, not the price, just what is it? Is it based off of a flat fee or is it a scale or how is it done at other places or?
That's a good question. I've got, I've got some friends that are inspectors in other towns or close like Maryville, Hobart. Uh, I'll get in touch with them, okay, and find out how they, how they rate their businesses, how they base their, you know, base their fees.
I think we saw them over the place.
But I, I believe they're a flat fee as well.
Flat fee?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's good to know. So I, I would think then, okay, so as far as, so we need to look at surrounding areas, what they, what they charge. And can you email, can you email, um, email me the, me and Jean are on the Public Health and Safety Committee, so we're probably gonna include it in the report, the five, um, categories that, that are in there. Um, and then we can kind of take a look at that, I don't know if, uh.
And I'll see if there's an easier way to break that down, but I think that's gonna be, I think that's gonna be the most convenient.
For fire, 'cause I mean, yeah, we can increase it, I mean, it's not gonna.
Well, yeah, and I, and I'm, you know, and I think that this fund is a very good thing, very noble thing to try to help people out, you know, in that situation. But to me, I understand going from thirty to fifty, but in my mind, I'm looking at, hey, if you were gonna have, if you're trying to help somebody that's in that situation, they just got burned out of a house, we gotta generate some money quickly. And there should be enough funding in there so that we can really help somebody in that situation and, and not take two years to get what we want to get.
I understand that.
We need money, let's do it.
I understand that and I, and I, I don't know if, I don't know if the city wants to be involved in something that, in depth, as far as, I mean, you crutch.
We don't wanna, we don't wanna keep temper.
It's strictly temper, this is basically one or two nights to get you to figure out. We don't wanna have to hold hands or, and I hate to use that term.
Right, but we understand all your pain.
It's strictly temper, it's a place to lay your head and get, gather your thoughts and figure out your next step.
You know what else would be, what could, could be helpful is, and maybe we can do this later, um, with the local hotels? And just to negotiate a rate.
I'm already on top, I'm already on.
Okay, negotiate a rate specifically for families that have been burnt out.
Yep.
That we, we're not, you know, hey, this is the max you'll charge in, and we, in whatever it is.
Like that, that card, the card that I showed you, it's a, it's a Visa, basically it's a gift card. You load these cards with a set dollar amount and they're non-reloadable.
Yes.
So once that card is done, it's, you can't reload it. So they're not going around town getting the discount on a reloading card.
Right, right.
So it's, it's a one and done. You go to, you go to either Walmart or Meyer, get you some clothes, get you some toiletries, basic things that you need to get you through that next step.
I'm gonna make it so that we return the card back to you.
Maybe, maybe you'll do, but it's not gonna do me good because you can't reload it.
You can't reload it at all.
Nope.
Oh, wow. It's a secret there.
Yeah, so we're there, I guess.
Okay, well, that's all I, I wanted to really talk about. I knew I didn't have a whole lot except for just understanding, I know the, the impact to the budget. I just knew we didn't want to impact the budget as far as the thirty dollars. But it sounds like everybody's in support of increasing it.
And, and if I can, so with that increase, will, and it's a non-reverting, will businesses or any other type of organizations be able to donate into that?
The non-reverting fund, I think we could order that, yes.
Yes, we would just order that way and that's a great idea.
That, and maybe, maybe the Red Cross can just dump some money in there and be done with it.
Yeah.
It'd be easier, you're dealing with the people right then and there.
Right then and there, there's no waiting. You know, and you have to, you know, some of them, there's nothing left for them to collect, except maybe some personal items if they're still available, but.
The only thing I discussed with Attorney Harris, we talked about the card. Um, and I know we put some stipulations, but I think, um, I would like to allow some flexibility for family size and some things like that. So I, I know we were saying, um, family and foreign things, so I, I think we took some of, we made it a little bit more general when we did the ordinance because of that. Um, I think if we can put together maybe a, um, I'd rather have, it doesn't have to be spelled out in here, but a policy more so than in the ordinance, because if, if there's a family that is, there's gonna be different levels of need and I'd rather have it spelled out in the policy than in the ordinance.
Absolutely, 'cause we don't know what we're gonna be dealing with.
That's, that's my point, and that's why.
Apartment complex, could be a single family home, it could be a number of things.
So I, um, try to make it generic enough so that, um, I'd rather have, see you all come up with a policy and then, you know, that policy you follow versus us put all of that in the ordinance.
Okay.
That's why I took some of that language out.
So I guess I have a question for Yvonne. If we, we create this, um, would this account, would it start like a, a number? Um, we would load some cards, uh, I would have a few, the PIO officer would have a few, the battalion chief would have a few. Uh, obviously checks and balances so we know where each card's going, um, information sheet, uh, probably, um.
And we want to fill up some type of paperwork.
Right, some type of paperwork. And then when that, when that account gets to a certain dollar amount, does that just get replenished back to that, to that, uh, to that level again? Like, let's just say randomly, start with ten thousand dollars, when it gets down to two thousand, does that get replenished? Back to ten thousand, is it continual?
Well, we would look at it that as the fees come in, we will automatically just receive that to that fund.
So it wouldn't have a cap?
Um, I, I wouldn't look at it that way, no. Um, but to start it out with ten thousand dollars or something, we need to budget that somewhere.
Right, I understand, right, I understand, right.
Yeah, but I don't think we would wanna necessarily cap it. Um, I, I mean, if ever grew to a million dollars, we probably need to rethink the whole program.
Right. But that's why we never have to use that much. It's nice to know that, that that would be there.
But let's, let's talk about other opportunities then, because do, so do you, you have a fund for education? A non-reverting fund or anything like that for education or anything like that?
We have a training budget.
So I'm talking about public education to the.
PIO budget, but that's not.
No, he doesn't have.
He's in train.
He's in training, so our PIO officer dips out of the training budget, he doesn't have his own.
So what about like the fire detectors and carbon monoxide detectors, where do those come in?
Usually donated to us.
Mostly donated, but if we have to.
If we have to buy them, then we take it out of one of our line items, our general fund line items.
See, so that's where I'm getting at. So if this fund is gonna be continual and let's say one year we don't have any fires, but we've collected, uh, additional fifty times fourteen hundred. All right, great. I feel like maybe I should expand what the, the non-reverting fund can be used for.
Put in there like for, for education and.
Public education.
Public education.
Public ed- education.
And you see detectors and fire detectors, smoke detectors.
Yes. We'll make that amendment, we can update that, because then, um, and that's a public, that's something that we should be doing anyway. And so I think that then, then we can accept donations into that fund. So there you go, we cover all that and then, I mean, I, you know, I just said, I, I.
Angie, when you say public education, are you talking about fire public education?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, to, to neighborhoods, yeah, to families.
What if it's only just schools, especially if you're.
Yeah, those are, those are all costly.
But do you also give, um, CPR, AED training?
That would be cool.
We do that separate, we do that separately, but it is available, it's not available, well, it's more of an entity, it's more of a business that calls us and says, hey, will you come put on a class?
Right, 'cause I, I would regret for that too. Free CPR for some of the churches.
There's a fee.
There is a fee for CPR training.
And it's not, that's not a whole lot.
I mean, for example, I, I, for example, um, someone taking care of an elderly person or whatever and they need the CPR training, if they could.
But even fires.
They could, or fires, yeah.
Yeah.
But you see, they could call us and it's a ten dollar charge for the car, maybe get charged just a ten to dollars, but we would train them. We would certify. But something, something that, that, of that importance, then with those funds, then that fee could be waived by paying it from there.
Okay, I, I like it all, so I, I'll make, I'll definitely make that amendment, but I need to follow up on the, on the, um, the fees, those categories. And then the good things we have until Tuesday, it won't be that hard to draft something acceptable.
I do have something that I don't think everybody's in, but so when we're doing the billing, every year we send out these invoices, we get some businesses that do not pay.
Yep.
So, um, March thirty first, what the old ordinance says is that it's due March thirty first. March thirty first comes, goes, we don't get some businesses. So we sent out a second invoice, guys do. Usually we say thirty days, April thirtieth comes.
Any late fees?
No, we do not.
Oh, I mean, no late fees.
There's no language that really allows us to, you know, add some teeth to this that we can go after.
I was gonna say to take this model.
Is this the report?
Well, it's in total, I, in tot-, in grand total, we have thirty thousand dollars of unpaid.
Unpaid.
From nineteen nine, we're going back to twenty nineteen, some of these other businesses that are closed, we just haven't cleaned up. I ran a report on twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-one. For twenty twenty-two, it looks like we billed out about twenty-six thousand five and we still have eighty-one hundred under, um, not paid.
Oh.
Then, then that should be.
Okay, so we need to.
And then in twenty twenty-one, the same thing, we have nine thousand unpaid from twenty twenty-one. So it's not correct, it's not really fair to raise the fee and then never do anything.
Then, if, if, once, once, once you all go do the notices, um, second notices, then from that point, take them, file it with small claims.
Well, we do, okay, so then we do the third, we do a third and final invoice and nothing. So at that point, there's no language anywhere that says what do you do?
Yeah, so this is.
There is no, we can't go to small claims, 'cause there is.
Right, so my thought process is we have, we have a process in place for our, our weed ordinance. When we go out and mow the, the, um, private property, we lean that property if they do not pay.
That's what I was.
But we would need that language put in here also.
See, but lean, see, there's, so for, for businesses though, the problem would be, it could be a corporate, it could be whatever.
They could be money, that's, so.
Yeah, so I'm not sure, you know, that may be a discussion with Amber, what are options to try and.
I do get a lot of phone calls that'll say, I'm the renter, who owes this bill, me or the landlord? And I'm like, that's between you and.
Well, it's based on business though, it's not the landlord.
Right.
Because you can have an office building with twenty businesses in it and each business has to pay.
But that's, that's between them and their, in their contract and their, their lease agreement. I say you gotta go and look at that.
We build a business and now if they get reversed from their landlord, that's on them.
Correct, that's why I tell them, you build a business, but it's between you and your landlord who has to pay this. I can't see your lease agreement.
Yeah, okay.
So you guys gotta figure that out yourself, yeah.
Would they get their attention if there was a penalty? Well, yeah, the second one, just make it bigger so that maybe they'll pay.
A hundred dollar penalty if it's more, if, after the sixtieth day.
Yeah.
And so.
It's gotta be a hundred.
So if it's a hundred bucks and then after that, I don't know, because you got, it sounds like we got reseeded offenders, the mountain to see.
That's right, that's right, just smart.
Yeah, so we notify their insurance company, they didn't have fire inspection? I mean, like that's kinda thing that the insurance company might wanna know.
So the next time over, you don't pay your bill, you shut your water off.
You told me what?
You shut your water off.
Wow.
I'm like, yeah, that's.
You don't pay your rent, you're in your garbage or you refuse to pay, they'll shut your water off later.
They'll lose attention.
They'll know my intentions.
Yeah.
Um, we're gonna, a couple towns over there.
Yeah.
So just, is there something that we can put in there too?
Well, the late fee is gonna be bad, because I think that once they see that there's a late fee. Then, and for the people who are behind, we need to put something, I don't know what we can do for the people that are behind. If they get behind, we feel like there should be something that's, if it reaches a certain amount, that at that point. Um utility, city utilities will be contacted, I don't know, I like it, so I'm just saying.
No, I like, I like to ta- I mean, can we put a lien on our taxes?
But they're businesses, and they may not be the owner of the building, like, you can have like um a office building, like an office building.
So they're running the space, but the owner of the building pays the property taxes.
And so every, every business in there pays this fee.
Plus it costs us to file a lien as well, right?
Oh, exactly.
So we gotta think of a more creative way to, to do that, cause. You can't even do the water, you can't even do the water thing, because the building, it could be ten, built ten things, so.
I know, I just.
Right, but I think significant late fees, and then my question would be to Amber is, if we have people that are past due now. What can we do if they have a bill, cause now that it's only sixty bucks, they're probably just saying, well, they ain't come out yet. But if we start tagging on for next year, they got sixty bucks plus fifty, and then another hundred.
Because they're late and.
And now we're saying that we're gonna take you to small claims after it gets to a certain amount, but we gotta make it significant within the year.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, if you don't pay by this time, immediately after March thirty first, it's a hundred dollar, hundred dollar late fee. If it gets to ninety days, it's another hundred dollars, because now to go to small claims for fifty people. You can take and put them all on the same docket, like the renter, renter, renter center or not, they're coming with fifty people. Then you can come and say, well, now I got fifty people on the docket that owe us three hundred fifty dollars, that's different. And it's worth it.
Um, we might have to contact Sue, but is it, I want more of her, but is this uh. Have anything to do with occupancy for me, cause she, you could have her possibly red tag the building, red tag the business.
Um.
I don't know, she does have a business, it might be the, it might be the physical structure for her.
You, you almost have to have an issue with the building.
Yeah.
To do that, but I'm just strictly coming in an inspection.
But I think, they have insurance, the businesses have to have insurance, don't they, insurance law, they did not do the inspection.
He can close a business if they're not paying, if they're not paying, if they're not complying.
Insurance company.
Yeah, those could contact all the insurance companies and the carrier and all that stuff.
He can shut a business off non-compliance, and if they're not paying, then they're not complying.
But I think we put those late fees on, I think, I think.
Third time, he shuts them off.
Yeah, if you receive a third, yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna shut your water off.
Yeah. I wish, but see, I, like my, I, they may not have water though, if this shared the building, share space, they might have water.
Water's my water.
My gym, severe pressure.
But, so Jeff, let me ask this question, it's, you know, a multi people sharing a building.
Yeah.
So, I own a building, say I got five businesses there, church, office, blah, blah, blah. Okay, when you do the inspection, who gets that report, me, cause I own the building? Or those businesses that are in the building?
Businesses.
Each business.
Each business gets their own inspection.
Business might not pay, you can't shut the water off to the whole building.
Perfect example is uh.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to know what the effect is.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
So I think the late fees, I think that's gonna be certain, yeah, I'll ask Amber about um options if it. After the second, so two years, the dollar is going up, so we're going on the third year. That something significant happens after that, but if we start, cause this will start next year as far as fees, right? It goes up, and now late fees will start.
On, in twenty twenty.
Yeah, so, you know, April one, you, you're, you're billed the late fee a hundred bucks. If it gets to ninety days, you'll get another tack on, plus any court fees. Then that will get people's attend, attention, cause we charge them in court fees, I think that's what Rent A Center. I remember I went in there, cause I, I used to have rental property, and, and the attorney was there at this with, he had like ten claims. And they billed them, that attorney's charges are going, go back to those tenants, to those renters, and I'm like. Same thing, so what we do is, we tack on, and after ninety days, we charge you whatever, plus whatever the billable hour is for the attorney.
Yeah.
Then the, then the.
I mean, do it.
Recording the fees.
I mean, he's done with it, right now, losing nine thousand dollars a year.
Ninety dollars to go filing.
You gotta add in the court fees.
That's the court fees, that, that was years ago, court fees are like ninety-two dollars, like I gotta pay to get somebody, you know, so. Yeah, okay, I will get with Amber.
I have one more question, since we're talking about the fire thing, do you recharge fire extinguishers?
We do not.
After the.
We have, uh, there's several companies in the area that do that.
So that's another thing, and maybe we pay for with that fee, I mean, if we have excess funds, we can pay for people to get their fire extinguishers.
No, that's, that's.
Recharge?
That's up to them, it's a business order.
Are you talking about the businesses right now?
No, I'm talking about like the, we're looking for the extra money that one item would collect.
They usually throw away from home use.
Yeah.
I need.
But that's a, you, I don't know if you wanna get into that, purchasing.
Alright, now, not much of a consumer.
It's just a confidence that I found with the retired fire, fire. I was just curious.
Sure.
Alright, well, this is great, I think um we have our plan in action, I'll reach out to Amber. And um to talk about um options for late fees, and then you'll email us the um, the five categories.
Classifications, yeah.
Classifications, and then um what we'll do is come up with some type of amendment for, for Tuesday.
Hey Jeff, can you look at South Bend too, see what they do?
Shoot.
Yeah, and I, I'm gonna look at South Bend, I'm personal friends with the chief over there too.
And, and I mean, I know they're a little bigger than us, but I'm just curious.
At least find out what their inspection fees are.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
I don't know, they might have a complete different inspection department.
Yeah, they, that's, yeah, they might, cause even like that, with the elders go, they had a whole.
They're on our same uh.
Yeah.
Size wise, city wise, Elkhart's a little bigger, Mishwaka's more on our size.
Goshen is, is about the same as uh, Goshen is, for sure. Alright, well, um with that being said, um we have work to do, and um. Work to be heard on Tuesday, and this week is adjourned, thank you all.